I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 8th, 2025 Johnson City Regional Planning Commission meeting. If you're here to speak during the public hearing portion of the agenda, please wait until I have opened the public hearing. Once opened, one person at a time, please come to the podium to be recognized by me. Please speak clearly into the microphone and begin your comments by giving us your name and address. Then each person would be allowed three minutes to speak, and please address your comments directly to the commission only. And I'll call the meeting to order at one minute after six. Commissioner Dutton, would you please lead us in an invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, as we gather for this meeting, we ask for the presence of your wisdom and guidance. May your spirit inspire us to make decisions that are just, fair, and beneficial to our community. Grant us the ability to listen to each other with respect and to work together in unity. We ask for your blessing on our deliberations. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have the agenda before us. Do I have any changes or additions or reductions?
Mr. Chairman, I gather that there is a, that there is one change that we are removing, item 7.3.
Staff, is that correct? 7.3 takes comes off the agenda, and those parties have been notified. Yes. All right, thank you. Any other changes?
Mr. Chairman, hearing all the changes, I move that we approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been revised, removing the third item on the new business item, and I have a second. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the agenda as adjusted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We also have the minutes from the June 10th meeting that have been presented to the commission. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or revisions?
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed the minutes and found them in accordance with our meeting, I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented of the June 10th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we'll come to the public comment of our agenda. There have been two people have registered for public comment. Is Ms. Elizabeth Rowe here? Could you come forward, please? And if you could give us your name and address, and then you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Elizabeth Rowe. My address is 217 Chadwell Road in Kingsport. I would like to begin by sharing that I admire each and every one of you and your dedication to serve this community by sitting on this commission and understand how difficult it can be. While this is my first time giving a public comment, it's far from my first experience. I graduated from ETSU's Master Public Administration Program and worked as a planner for the First Tennessee Development District, and then the City of Kingsport as Development Coordinator, before taking my current role with D.R. Horton. It is a blend of my past experience and current role that brings me to the podium this evening, specifically in regard to item 6.1 on the agenda, the reduction of D.R. Horton's sidewalk bond for Phase Two of Clearwater Springs, some specifics not outlined in the agenda packet. Firstly, the developer did not post the $237,600 bond. It was posted by D.R. Horton. This is a significant differentiation to make, as a developer and a home builder are two separate entities. The bond estimate that I received for Clearwater Springs Phase Two did not contain the same verbiage as the estimate that was presented to this commission in October of last year. I received two different emails from staff with bond estimates attached, and each attachment was the same, $237,600, with the only line item being sidewalks. In early June of this year, I requested the bond be released, since all sidewalks had been constructed, inspected, and approved. It was through this request that I learned that this commission was presented with an estimate that had a different line item but the same dollar amount. Johnson City Engineering has presented this item to you tonight as a reduction to the bond amount, referencing the same estimate brought before Planning Commission. However, I would like to inform the commission that the actual letter of credit issued by Truist, approved by the city, then accepted by the city, only includes sidewalks and asphalt if it is damaged during the construction of sidewalks. To my understanding, there's no argument as to the condition of the sidewalks being complete and accepted, nor any true damage to the roadway that is attributed to the sidewalk construction. The question for you all to consider is whether or not you can deny a request to fully release a bond when all bonded work has been completed. To me, there is no difference in D.R. Horton's bond release requests and other bond release requests on tonight's agenda, and I would appreciate the commission's further discussion regarding the agenda item as presented. I do have a recent aerial photo of the site, and the bond estimate that I received, should you wish to review it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second person registered for public comment is Mr. Harold Hunter. Is he here? Mr. Hunter? He's not here, so we'll go to the next item. We have four items on our consent agenda. One, 6.1, Clearwater Springs Phase Two, D.R. Horton Sidewalk Bond Reduction. Number two, Glaze Farm Phase One and Phase Two Bond Release. Number three, the Landy Midway Road Dedication. And number four, a Beechwood Meadows Final Platte. Does anyone have any questions or want to pull one of those for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, having heard the public comment from D.R. Horton, I think we should pull item, I move that we pull item 6.1 from the consent agenda to discuss separately. I think there's something there that warrants some, at least some clarity.
All right, I have a motion to pull 6.1.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to pull 6.1 from the consent agenda. All in favor of pulling that forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that leaves 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Does anyone want to pull any of those?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the remaining three consent agenda items as stated.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the three, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 consent agenda items as present, as not presented, but to be considered on the consent agenda. Any second, have a second, any other discussion? All in approving those three items for the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Putney, could you have some presentation material on 6.1?
Just what was in your packet regarding the sick, item 6.1 for the bond release. Let me just pull up the PowerPoint here. And our engineering department is here as well and can probably answer any further questions. But the item for consideration is a bond reduction for the Clearwater Phase Two sidewalk bond posted by D.R. Horton. The bond reduction, at the time of release, Public Works would not release the full bond amount of $237,600 and recommended a reduction of $181,000 with a remaining of $56,000 to cover the cost of milling and resurfacing of the sidewalk, not sidewalk, excuse me, the roads around the sidewalks. And that was at the request and recommendation of Public Works to not release that full bond. They are here tonight to answer any specific questions relating to that bond amount.
Ms. Putney, sorry. Ms. Putney, do you have a copy of the bond form that was posted and accepted by the city?
I have, it is in your packet, your staff report packet. However, it is not in the, the presentation, just the new bond estimation sheet, but in your staff report packet, there is a full bond report. But it is listed, the one presented was sidewalks, milling and resurfacing for $237,600.
Questions for staff?
Ms. Putney, when they talk about asphalt repair, can they get into a little specifics of what that means? Because, of course, we're hearing two different things, right? We're hearing, one, that it looks okay, and that it's fine, and that there's agreement on that, and then here, we're hearing that it's not.
Correct.
So can we hear from the city on why it's not?
Yes. I will ask Wallace McCulloch to come up and, and discuss the requirements for that sidewalk and asphalt repair.
So, so what we're generally looking for out there is, they, they do the sidewalks, they, they install the sidewalks, and the reason they do the sidewalks, and the, and the developer doesn't, is because when they go in there to construct their homes, they're all over the place with everything, and it's just much easier for them if they, if they post the bond for the sidewalk rather than the developer. That way, they're not having to replace that sidewalk. The, the problem comes up with the roads is that they get, they get dinged up during construction, and there's pits and gouges and things like that in the roads. And so we've asked them to do a mill and resurface, because they ask for the final surface instead of just leaving the base course down. They want the final surface. And so during that construction, again, when they're all over the place there, it just, we, the roads are just, they don't look new any longer, they just look pitted and gouged. And that's the reason we did it. A previous time, we, we held some COs, they didn't like that, so this, this seemed to be a good solution to that.
Do I understand correctly from Ms. Rowe that the original bond indicated just for sidewalks and not other scope of work?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I just, I, I know when we did the bond, I don't recall what happened, then one of the, my staff, a, one of the inspectors prepared that bond, and we discussed that, that we needed a milling and resurfacing in there just to be able to cover the, the, the road repairs.
How, so, well, just one follow-up question. Bottom line is, there's damage that needs to be repaired, and the city needs to be protected to make sure that that damage is repaired.
That's correct.
How often does something like this happen, and where we have to resurface a road after the sidewalks were put in?
For these developments, it seems like it's pretty frequent.
Okay.
And, and, you know, you could go out there and yourselves and take a look, and just see what they're like.
Is the inherent damage that occurs to the road during this construction, is it, is it attributable to the construction of the sidewalks, or this, the general work going on in the neighborhood?
It's the general work of the neighborhood. It's really not necessarily connected to the sidewalk. That's, the only reason it's added to that sidewalk bond is because that's the bond that they post that comes from D.R. Horton. And so the, the pavement repair is a part of that bond as well, because, I mean, they're posting the bond for both.
And this is going to be a city street, of course, that
Yes.
And damage means potentially water intrusion, which can, which can infiltrate to subgrade and really, really impact the road if it's not repaired.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
The original bond documentation, if it doesn't clearly state in there that this also covers asphalt and resurfacing, I feel like that's a little bit of an issue. Is there another way we can get the $56,000 for this project besides this avenue?
Um, basically, if they all agree to repair the roads, I'm, I'm good with that.
Do we need the D.R. Horton representative to commit to that?
I, I think it would be interesting to hear, you know, because I, for me, there's two issues here. We have two, we have two bodies that are very important. We have the city and a, and a great home builder telling us that there's different takes on things. And then we also have a documentation question. Was the original document, did it include the resurfacing or not? Are we adding things on to that original document or not?
To, to answer from a planning perspective of maybe a question that was asked of Wallace about whether this would be, whether we had a different avenue, what, I think, what, what the engineering department is really seeking is that we do need some kind of steps, and we are working to kind of figure out how, maybe there's some better steps that we can do, but at this point, I would believe that you would need to make a decision on what's in front of you versus, and if we need to, in the next month, work with D.R. Horton to make changes, that that would be what would happen. Because I'm not really necessarily sure that we should be debating a bond at the, at this level. We might need to come back with further information.
Is the J.C. Builds Forum, which is an exercise between the development community and the city to improve the working relationship, is that a venue where this question could be addressed?
Yes.
Mr. McCulloch, are you part of that discussion?
We've been going to it, yes.
And of course, D.R. Horton is participating, I think? Is that correct?
I believe I've seen them there, but they're invited as well.
Mr. Chairman, after digging into, after asking a few questions here, and I think the, the language on the, on the city, the original city documentation is that it is an estimate sheet. And I think in terms of the, the protecting, in terms of protecting the city, it's, it's not unreasonable, I think, to require a little bit of the bond to remain outstanding, to give the city some degree of assurance that, that, that the, the streets will be repaired satisfactorily and therefore not suffer damage from, from, from water intrusion. So with, you know, with the qualifications, I think going forward, this, of course, becomes a lot easier if we're talking about if on the estimate sheet, asphalt, the, you know, an amount for potential asphalt repairs is, is included going forward. I think in this instance, I would move that the, that the bond be reduced as, as 56,000 as presented by, as presented by staff.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to reduce the bond to $56,000, and a second to cover the additional work that's due to be done for repairing the streets. Further discussion. I do have one point of discussion. I would like to ask the planning department if you would work with Public Works to evaluate this question going forward and try to clarify misunderstandings between the city and the developer. And if that's, can be done during J.C. Builds, I, I, that's perfectly fine forum for where that conversation can happen. And would you report back to us, please? Would you mind amending your motion with that suggestion?
Consider my motion amended accordingly. Heather, if you have the notes to do that, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second to reduce the bond to 56,000 and ask city's administration to look at clarifying the situation so these, this doesn't happen in the future. Any further discussion? Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbaum?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move to the item 7.1, the first item under new business, which is a Washington County rezoning at 138 Minga Drive, and this would be a county project where we are being asked to give guidance to the county. Mr. McNamara.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Bryce McNamara, Planner One, Planning Division. This is a rezoning within Washington County at 138 Minga Drive. This is within the Johnson City Planning Region, therefore, we are the recommending body as the Regional Planning Commission. We will be forwarding a recommendation towards the Washington County Commission, which is tentatively, tentatively being held on July 28th for final action of the rezoning. I've also noted that moving past the rezoning final action, there is a possibility of comprehensive development plan that would be processed by the Washington County Planning Commission at a later date. Looking at the aerial view here, this is situated on the northern side of Minga Drive, the bulk of the property by the star. We can see the outline here. Minga Drive is a local road that is a very brief start and stop between Claude Simmons and West Market. The request is to rezone one parcel, approximately 18-plus acres. Currently, R1, R1 and A1, that being low-density residential and general agriculture, both of those within the Washington County zoning resolution. The request is to go to the PRD II Planned Residential District to accommodate a future residential development. Taking a look at the current conditions of the site, there are quite a bit of various elevation changes. Most of the steeper ones being situated towards the northern part, also the more dense vegetation being concentrated in this area, as this area is more relatively flat and open here. There is an existing water line that runs along Minga Drive. The existing sewer line runs approximately parallel, about 200 feet to the north. You will notice the green line here is actually the city and county boundary, so the frontage of this property is actually within the city limits. We'll get to it a little bit later, but traffic will be assessed further at the time of development permits. Taking a look into the city and county boundary here, this area is actually a, within the boundary of an annexation that was processed approximately 25 years ago, when property lines looked a lot different, and this stem did not exist at that time. So this is about half an acre here, and this is also at the time when the right-of-way of Minga Drive came into the city boundary. As mentioned, the current zoning in Washington County is split between R1, low residential, and A1, general agriculture. The portion that is within the city and the frontage of Minga Drive is R3, a medium-density residential district. Other adjacent zoning in the county is also R1 and A1. We can see that that R3 along Minga extends over to Claude Simmons and somewhat along that frontage as well. And this does back over into the corridor of West Market, which is primarily the B4, Planned Arterial Business District. Some of the other nearby zoning we'll see on the counting, in the county side, is R3, which is a high-density residential zoning district, and R3A, as well as some B3, which is commercial zoning. Once again, the requested zoning being the Planned Residential District II. Looking at this requested zoning, a pretty significant component of this request is that the PRD II works a lot like RP District's work, where the Planning Commission will have to approve a comprehensive development plan prior to any construction. Now, the difference between the city and the county here is that we have a concept plan requirement at the time of the rezoning. The comprehensive development plan comes separate from the rezoning. Looking at the specific uses of the Planned Residential District II, this is only going to be residential uses, however, single-family, two-family, and multifamily. The density is capped at 6.5 units per acre for this site. That ranges somewhere from about 115 to 120, given the acreage. The setbacks are only on the boundaries of the zoning district itself, so interior, there would not be any, but along the boundaries, there would be 25 feet on all sides, and there would likely be a buffer yard. Now, as mentioned, the concept plan is not required for the rezoning. However, the applicant has submitted a preliminary site plan. This will only be for visual purposes only. This is not going to be binding, and this, this is not within the purview of the Planning Commission at this time. However, this does depict a planned unit development of 69 single-family units on a common lot. Taking a look at the current land use of the site, this is classified as agricultural. However, if we look at Minga Drive itself, we can see it is almost entirely residential, and as we get closer back to the B4 zoning within the city, goes into what we would see as a more commercial use in this area. Along Minga, we see a few patches of yellow, which is single-family. However, it is primarily multifamily, all the way over to Claude Simmons and right in front of the frontage of the property. These multifamily uses vary between, we have mobile homes, we also have quadplexes, duplexes, and multiple single-family residences on the same lot, ranging anywhere from about five to about nine units per acre when calculated into density. Future land use map 2020 has this site split between residential and commercial, does have the commercial cutoff about where the zoning is on Minga Drive, and then transitioning into residential as we get closer to Claude Simmons. However, the Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map has this entire parcel classified as neighborhood residential, is, is adjacent to the commercial corridor along Market Street here. And if we look at a few of the appropriate land uses, we have single-family, some consideration, consideration is given to quadplexes and townhomes. Looking into the characteristics, we have single-use, moderate density, a little bit more on the appropriate side for residential, and then moderate setbacks. Some of the policies within the Horizon 2045 Plan, both within Strong Neighborhood section, supporting the development of housing choices that are reflecting compatibility of scale, creation of place defined by the Future Land Use Map, going into Policy N221, aligning zoning with the placetype maps to increase a variety of housing options, sizes and densities in strategic locations. And looking back at the Bridge Plan, land use element, Policy 222, Action 1, promoting and coordinating zoning regulation subdivision regulations within the various county governments. In this case, we would be coordinating to get a similar zoning district as this parcel is divided between the city limits, so the R3 and the PRD II having a similar permitted uses set, as well as this, a similar density, that being seven and 6.5. While the neighborhood meeting is not required in the county, nor does staff directly handle with the citizen concerns, staff has been reached out to multiple times by, by surrounding neighbors and, and other citizens stating some concerns, mostly about the density, that being too high for the area, and the direct impact that that would have on traffic directly on Minga Drive, and how that would impact Claude Simmons itself, as well as the entering to exiting onto the arterial of West Market Street. Other dealing with more closely to the development-based impacts, that being stormwater runoff and the disturbance of natural features. Now, it, it is important to note that staff does recognize the possible traffic impacts and other development-based impacts that could happen for the surrounding area. These will have to be evaluated at the later time with development permits and when an official plan is submitted to the county staff, and then eventually having, having to be approved by the Washington County Planning Commission. Our scope is limited at this time. Is this a appropriate request for a zoning district? We are not looking at the plan itself. So with that being said, staff would recommend approval of the rezoning, given that the PRT, PRD II allows residential uses that are similar in scale and in character to what is already existing with the current zoning of R3 along the frontage, as well as this request being consistent with the placetype of neighborhood residential as based in the Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Questions for staff?
Does, does PRD II require single-family?
It doesn't require single-family.
So a given building, if you will, could be, have multiple residences in it in this particular?
Mr. McNamara, I've probably driven down this road 1,000 times, honestly, Minga Drive, and it is quite narrow. So my question is, is I have no doubt that, I, I understand the zoning and the appropriateness of the location, I see that. When the county looks at the actual comprehensive plan, the plots, and let's say they do apartments or something, you know, like Mr. Cooper recommended or suggested, what is the city's requirement to follow any type of traffic study that they show regarding road modifications, since it is a city road?
As far as what the county would require for a traffic study?
What they, what they determine. Let's say they determine that it needs a turn lane, or it needs shoulders, or things of that nature.
I will defer that question to Planning Director of Washington County, Angie Charles. She's here.
Ms. Charles, can you come forward, please? If you mind.
Thank you, sir.
And could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes. Angie Charles, 1185 West Mountain View Road, Johnson City.
And you're with the county planning department?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The question, I believe, was regarding a traffic study requirement and any improvements that might be generated.
How has the city previously responded to your recommendations as a county regarding road modifications that your studies determine need to happen for build?
The county would not require a traffic study for this development, so we would not be approaching the city for any improvements to that road. That would be outside of our jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
That's helpful.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff, or for any other staff?
Commissioner Ocean Vine, it is noted that with the frontage and there needing to be a driveway permit to be pulled from the city right-of-way itself, that could be a time that we, as a city, could evaluate that and require a traffic study. However, that would need to be at the time of a site plan, so to tell.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Is the developer present? I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us under public comment? If you could please come to the podium.
My name is Jonathan Lewis. I'm 4605 Bristol Highway, Johnson, or Pine Flats, and I'm with Highlands Engineering, where the applicant, working for the developer, Minga Road Properties. Just a few little things that I've got, you know, the county PRD2 allows for six point five units per acre, and we propose approximately half of that at three point seven units per acre. So we're not really pushing the boundary of PRD2 whatsoever. With the R3 zoning, which is portion of the property is currently zoned, seven units per acre would be allowable. A twenty-five-foot landscape buffer will run the perimeter of this property to limit the impacts of, to the surrounding neighbors. Stormwater management will be provided per Washington County regulations, ensuring that that post-development runoff will be at pre-development levels. And the rezoning is consistent with, you know, the Horizon Growth Plan. It fits perfectly. As far as the traffic concerns, the road being within the city limits, Johnson City is going to have jurisdiction over the entrance to this development, as well as what would occur as far as a traffic impact study improvements to Minga Road. So the county will be reviewing the development as a whole. However, the connection to the city limits will be reviewed by the city of Johnson City.
Thank you. Any questions?
And any questions that you may have.
So I think, so you probably understand we're going to likely require a traffic study in association with that driveway permit?
I would assume, yeah. It's about twenty-foot wide right now. You know, typical is probably twenty-two to twenty-four. You know, it's probably what it should be. However, you know, how we get to that point, or what the traffic impact study shows, I don't know. You know, there's approximately, I think, thirty residences that tie onto Minga, the majority of those being towards Claude Simmons. The entrance to this property will be in the, probably the first twenty percent coming off of Market. So I think the majority of people are going to come out of there and, you know, go east towards Johnson City. Maybe, of course, you're going to get some cross through, but I guess the traffic impact study will show that.
Mr. Lewis, is the intent to tie into city water and sewer?
Yes, yes.
So I'm just curious, why not annexation?
The flexibility of the PRDs that the county have just matches the demographic model that the developer wants to follow a lot more closely than Johnson City's. And in addition, you know, it's a very cut-up kind of piece of property, and, you know, the layout of your typical traditional subdivision with lots is a lot more difficult. You know, it'd be better if it were, you know, a straight box, but with all the twists and turns, and the PRD just allows for a little more flexibility where that's concerned.
As far as lot lines?
There are no lot lines.
I mean, so explain the flexibility as to that you're seeking.
The flexibility being that, let's say, we can take a road from Minga Road into our property and have more of a meandering kind of path. We don't have to have a set lot size, so to speak. It's basically just the home size. You know, the homes that we are proposing, conceptually in there, have a three thousand square foot footprint. You know, we're not talking about a small home by any means, so.
And to be clear, so you're proposing single-family is what you're proposing?
Yes.
You're not proposing multifamily or townhomes or?
No. Further questions for Mr. Lewis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is open. Does anyone else want to speak to the question? If you could, please come forward and give us your name and address. You have three minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tracy Bowers, and my husband and I live at 269 Claude Simmons Road, and we also own a home at 237 Claude Simmons Road. We have lived here for seventeen years, and we are opposed to the rezoning of the property on Minga Drive for many reasons. However, the most important reason is regarding the increase of traffic that will result if this development is allowed. More specifically, the increase of accidents that will occur. Our two properties join and front Claude Simmons Road at a distance of about seven hundred and eighty feet, all the way to Minga Road. We have seen many accidents occur for the seventeen years we have lived there, and we have seen our property damaged. Here's an example of a structure on our property that has been hit so many times, we don't try to restore it anymore. This is also a photo of the guard rail that is across from the seven hundred and eighty feet of Claude Simmons Road that has been hit so many times, I don't know how it's keeping a car up anymore. I contacted Washington County 911, and through the Freedom of Information Act, I was able to obtain the number of accidents that have occurred in just this seven hundred and eighty-foot stretch of road, and included Minga. And I arbitrarily picked a date range of January 2023 through June 1st of 2025, and found there have been twenty-nine accidents. Twenty-nine accidents in seven hundred and eighty feet of distance, and those are just the ones that were reported. My husband and a service truck clipped mirrors on Minga Drive one morning on their way to work, and they didn't report it. The road is too narrow for two vehicles to even pass one another safely. Even if he only did sixty homes, instead of the sixty-nine they're proposing, we would see a minimum of additional one hundred and twenty cars a day onto Claude Simmons and Minga, and these small county roads cannot handle such an increase. In addition, I personally talked with the Johnson City Planning Office a few years ago about developing the part of our property that does front Minga. We wanted to put three lots to build three homes, and I was told there was a significant rise in the road that impeded sightlines, and it would make it dangerous for cars when they pulled out of driveways. So I do not see how it now can be deemed safe for a hundred and twenty cars to access Minga Drive if this development happens, because they will have just one entrance on Minga Road. We consider this area, that red star, all of that property to the left is mine, we consider it agricultural, country living, and we want to keep it this way. We would also like to keep our families and pets and neighbors safe as we travel the small county roads, so therefore, we ask you to vote no to rezone the property on Minga Drive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lottie Ryan, St. Stoffler Place, Johnson City. I'm a homeowner in Strawberry Fields subdivision, accessed via Claude Simmons Road. We've been waiting for some time to have the tunnel issue resolved, and we do have a city represented meeting with our neighborhood next week, so we'll hear more about what plans there might be for that. I'm very concerned about the increased traffic the Minga Road development will have on Minga Road and on Claude Simmons. We're already concerned about the number of multifamily units that have been approved and are under construction. I'm keenly aware of the housing shortage, particularly affordable housing in our city, and being named the best place to live likely will exacerbate that challenge. I'm not opposed to new development necessarily, but I am concerned that Claude Simmons continues to be a major road for people coming to and from Jonesboro, and I'm not currently aware of any plans to alleviate the traffic issues, road widening, anything, and/or the tunnel issues. If you've ever traveled to that area around five o'clock, you know what I'm talking about. I urge the planning commission to delay recommending rezoning and the rezoning request in order that road and traffic issues can first be resolved. I understand tax dollars do pay for infrastructure and are a necessary part of planning and growth. I would suggest that Strawberry Fields and surrounding neighborhoods have been paying for taxes for more than two decades, with the only real improvement for our traffic issues being the addition of a red light at the tunnel. Thank you for your service, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Buck. My wife and I own the residence at 283 and 285 Claude Simmons Road. We are opposed to this rezoning. If you can hold for just a second, please. Do me a favor and refrain from touching the microphone. You guys hear me?
Yes.
And we are proposed to this rezoning, and our request is that we retain the current rezoning designation, and I've got a list of points that I think are relevant to this request. Obviously, as highlighted by the engineer, these are not permanent plans, they can change, and the approval of the request does not provide or guarantee what the ultimate configuration or density would end up being. And we've already heard the concerns about traffic on this road, even if that is addressed. The main concern that I have is that you would still only have one access point, which if blocked by an accident or fire, prevents any access or egress from the site. Removal of trees from the heavily-sloped and forested north portion of the parcel results into views of secluded backyards. Difficult grading in the northern parcel portion due to steep slopes and large elevation changes could require retaining walls abutting adjacent properties to the north and northwest. In addition, the forested northern section has a significant grading height differential, and current sizable runoff flows through a swale to the northwest across the 283 Claude Simmons Road property, and ridge drain is at the peak elevation will be toward my residence at 285 Claude Simmons Road. Again, just to reiterate, the city-county approval process does not provide adequate opportunity for current property owners to review any serious impacts until after rezoning. We purchased these properties because the surrounding properties were rural, private, peaceful, and quiet with abundant wildlife, and our request is that we keep it this way. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Buck.
My name is Jeff Hoplin, and I live at 130 Minga Drive. I purchased this property on May 7th, is the day I closed on it. About two weeks later, a sign pops up that they're wanting to try to rezone it, so it's like within two weeks of when I purchased the property. The area that they're talking about trying to develop is on three sides of my property. It literally circles all the way around me. On the far-right side, it is over top of me looking down. On the other side, it is on the downhill side from me on both the left and the back side. So it's going to be circling all the way around me, which will have significant impact on how this goes. And as I said, I moved there because it was zoned as rural, agricultural, and the zoning that I think they're going for, I think it's way too aggressive. I think some houses with large lots, which, if you actually look at what they're recommending in the Horizon 2045, they specifically have that area as the residential, and there's a strong preference towards single-family, large lot. They could have up to a hundred and twenty units. The way that it's developed is there's, it's a lollipop, so it's on a long stick. So this development is not actually on Minga. This development is on the backside, which is a much more private, much more secluded area. It is not an area that has multifamily residences or anything like that. It is well removed from that. The houses that are in that area are all single-family, larger homes. The hill on Minga is a blind hill followed by a blind corner that goes onto Market Street. The other end is the tunnel. It doesn't make sense. This development destroys what this community, what the community that is currently there is about. I have a petition that we have five hundred signatures. We went door-to-door, have a hundred and ninety personal door-to-door signatures, and we did an online signature as well. Many people from Strawberry Fields as well are opposing it, all the way down Claude Simmons. We talked to every single resident on Minga Drive. One hundred percent of the residents on Minga Drive, which is the multifamily homes and everything, they one hundred percent opposed it, okay? So the community does not want this development there. I definitely don't think it's good for my property, but I don't think it's, I think you can see that this is not a popular option in this area, and I think it's too broad.
Thank you, Ms. Hoplin.
Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, my name is Michael Duver, and I live at 115 Dove Drive, which is, it's almost on that picture right there. I was actually the listing agent for this house on 130 that Dr. Hoppin bought, and during the two years I had it listed, nobody called me about any prospective development that was going on. And I was a little bit surprised, too, after a couple of weeks after Mr. Hoppin bought the house, that the zoning sign came up. Now, I live on Dove Drive there, right at Headtown Road, and I hear ambulances going down Headtown quite often. There was a young child a couple of years ago, you know, he came up, John Vance, and he hit the bank on the other side of Headtown and died, and his teacher was in the, but there's so many accidents that happen, and right now, actually, I represent a buyer who's going to be buying a twelve acres on Oakland Ave, and they are going after zoning there. They're going to build two hundred and fifty units. Right now, Greg Cox, right beyond the tunnel, going towards Johnson City, right there at Nob Creek and Mountain View, I was just in the development there, there's like two hundred and fifty units there. Further down, the same sellers who are selling, my people, who are going to build two hundred and fifty units on that eleven point nine acres, which is behind Lowe's, right across the street, the road is blocked right now, and they're building probably three hundred and fifty units right now. So if we add sixty houses to Minga, there's no light, there's no light, there's no traffic light to get onto Market Street off of Minga, or on the other side of Claude Simmons to get onto Market Street. So adding more traffic, I mean, two hundred cars, let's say, to that traffic, I mean, after these apartment complexes get through, I mean, people going through that little tunnel, anyways, I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Joseph Alvort. I live at 204 Claude Simmons Road, just around the corner from Minga. And we bought two years ago, and the traffic is markedly heavier now than it was then, and you've got all the construction people coming from anywhere down Claude Simmons and going to the construction sites down that are going on now. Now, if you add that, and you start putting graders and so forth that are coming in on Minga, isn't that going to destroy the road? I mean, the traffic is horrible. It's less distance. I came to the city with a request to put in a lot on the back of mine, and they request came to the city with a request to put in a lot on the back of mine, and they request, require 50-foot easement for a driveway to get to the back lot. Minge is not even 20 feet wide, I don't think. Right around there. So I mean, for a driveway, you need that, but for a development, I'm sorry, but thanks for listening. I'm opposed.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Commissioners, I'm Stuart Buck. I live on 283 Claude Simmons Road. I'm a retired architect. This density being proposed is way out of line, is inappropriate for this kind of a neighborhood and the topography that's there. But my biggest concern is the process. I understand it's already codified in law, but you have a process and the county has a process. We, as residents, do not see what's ultimately going to be there. Once it's rezoned to PR2, they could put up to 20, 120 units on there, as in your report. We do not know that. The current developer says he's only gonna do a few, he's gonna reduce it by half, but they could turn around and sell the property after the rezon. And somebody new can come in and build multifamily housing on there, three stories high. It's a planned unit development. There's no property lines. There's no control. And we have no ability to see it until after it's done. And then we have to fight each little step along the way. I'm opposed.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments from the public?
Good evening, and thank you so much for the work that you do. I appreciate it.
Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Linda Sorell, and I live at 252 Claude Simmons Road. Part of the guardrail is on Simmons Road, and that goes toward Minge Road is on our property line. We live over the hill from the property. And we own two adjacent properties consisting of seven and a half acres. My parents bought the three-acre plot in 1946, which was my early childhood home. And we moved, my husband and I moved here in, again, in 1978, and eventually purchased that plot from them. And we bought the adjacent four and a half acres in 1986. And our oldest daughter and her husband plan to move here after retiring from the U.S. Army next summer. So this land is my beloved heritage. We love it. We love, every morning getting up and looking out the window and saying, how beautiful it is, looking at the wild turkeys, the deer, the squirrels, the birds. And we are blessed on this land to have such beautiful natural surroundings. Our concerns include the strain on the infrastructure, the loss of our community character. We enjoy our quiet life in the country, and our closest neighbors and us look out after each other. And, but we're mainly concerned about the traffic, which is a bit addressed. So thank you again for your listening and considering our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Sorell. Further comments? Let's, let him, he's coming. He's, this. Thank you, sir.
I'm Britt Bowers, 269 Claude Simmons. And obviously, joining everyone here is opposed, but everyone's kinda covered things I was concerned about, obviously the traffic. But any of us neighbors to that property would love to invite you to walk it with us, so you could see the topography and how difficult we think, anyway, that it would be to develop anything on that property. And if you haven't, I know you have, some of you have, we would invite you to drive Minge and Claude Simmons and just see, you know, the width of the road and traffic. Peak times, 7:30 in the morning and 5:00 in the evening would be good times to try it out. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. How you doing? I'll make it short, sweet. I live on 146 Claude Simmons Road and own several housing developments on both sides of these streets.
And your name, sir?
Charles Williams.
Thank you.
Own 146 Claude Simmons Road, which is to the left of the, let's say, you come down Minge Drive, to the left. Okay, I own that, this particular house. I own a rental house at the end of Minge and Claude Simmons Drive. And it is a hazardous road. What it is, it has a steep grade during rainy weather. I had to put up a utility post to protect the house that I own right there, because a lot of people drove right through, almost destroyed the house at home. And then plus, own some rental right across the entry where this guy's wanting to cut into the driveway on Minge Drive, owned a couple mobile homes right there. And I've had issues with my renters trying to pull out, because the road they were speaking about, most of your roads have to have about a 20-foot or so right-of-way. A lot of these roads have about 16-foot right-of-way, right there where they're talking about the bend in the road. Two vehicles cannot pass at the same time, one going north, one coming south. You have to give each other a time to go through there. Matter of fact, I own quite a bit of property on both those roads, but it is a hazardous due to the fact that the road can't handle it. You gotta look, one-lane tunnel was built in 1911. Two or three homes on that street were about built in early 1900s. My house was built in 18. And those homes were, the roads and stuff were designed back then in the 1800s, early 1900s, 1800s, when mainly, back then, you know, there wasn't much traffic, just mainly a horse and carriage. And that's the problem you have with this type of development there. These roads were not designed. And that's the main concern of all these fine folks here is due to the fact, is the mountain drive. And plus, now, like, you have people come from Jonesboro, they'll take a left, right below Valley equipment, and it'll take the shortcut through Claude Simmons. And as you know, as a city developers, it always was a, you take your turn at the one light, you know, the one-lane tunnel, you take your turn, I take my turn. So now it's got so congested. Like these, one of these fine folks said, the main thing the city did was just put a red light there. And the city of Johnson City has debated on how to try to build that new road from Lowe's over to the new school that Jonesboro built. And they can't figure out how to go across the CSX railroad tracks. And that's where the city is gonna run along adjacent, where the sales owns all the property across the tunnel, like you're going towards Lowe's. I mean, you got a one-lane tunnel built in 1911. Come on, guys, you're trying to throw, and you're already having confusion here. Now, you're opening yourself up to liability capabilities because of the failure of the size of the community and roads there. But anyway, that's all I've got to say, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Further comments from the public? Please come forward.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me okay. My name is Caleb Bear. I reside at 313 Robin Road in Bristol, Tennessee. But I do have perspective on this road, as I did live throughout my high school years on 111 Brawls Drive, which is just two or three miles up the road. I'm not sure if any of you have lived in a multifamily unit or apartment complex, but I have, if you know of Island Road Villas in Bristol, right across from the Pinnacle. My wife and I lived there for three years roughly. And it does indeed reside on a road much like Minge. There's a blind hill, a blind curve. But with a different perspective, it is an actual city road. It's a two-lane road, beautiful yellow lines. And we've witnessed many of accidents there, not just on a rainy day, but multiple throughout the month. I'm sure you could find that on public record, as we looked earlier. But aside from that, there's a huge noise difference that would come into this area. Knowing that from living in a multifamily unit, sure, they'll bark noise ordinance at you. But there's plenty of vehicles that you can't control, who's gonna be living in there, how many. But there will be a significant noise ordinance, headlights beaming through windows of residents at all hours of the night, because the common courtesy and respect of local residents is gone at that point, because sure, they may vet the residents there, but ultimately, they can't control the coming and going of 200-plus more cars. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Further comments? Mr. Lewis, did you have a further comment?
No, I just, I just think it's worth saying that...
Please come to the podium.
I just think it's worth saying that there are three adjoining properties to this property. The conflicts with traffic out on the railroad underpass, you know, the Realtor spoke of 250 units here, 125 units there, especially when those are all on nine acres. You know, we've got 18 acres with 60 units. 60 units is a drop in a bucket compared to what is occurring more towards that railroad trussel. Just thought that that was worth saying.
Thank you, sir. Last call for comments. Raise your hand if you have something to say. Seeing none, I'm a closed public comment. Commissioner, it's up to us. What's your, what are your thoughts?
Can I ask Bryce a couple of questions?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Minge is considered what type of road? Arterial or collector? Local road. Local road. Okay, that's all I've got. For Bryce, thanks.
Before you step away, Bryce.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, just, Bryce, would you mind perhaps just recapping the process going forward? You know, should this, should we make a recommendation, to which I need is just a recommendation to Washington County to approve this project? Would you describe again the various steps that this development will have to go through in order to achieve a final approval?
And I'd add to that, regardless of what the recommendation is, is whether we, if we decide to say yes, what happens? And if we say no, what happens? So whatever the recommendation is, if it's yes or no, it will still move forward to the Washington County Commission on July 28th. That will be the final action of the rezoning. If the rezoning goes through with the requested PRD2, a requirement of that zoning district prior to any development occurring is the approval of a comprehensive development plan by the Washington County Planning Commission. So that will go back to what would be the third commission, considering the type of development. And that would be the time that the actual site plan itself is considered and set in stone. And then development would occur.
And with respect to the driveway, the driveway permit that'll be required?
Correct. At that time, at that time, we would take a look at it with our public works staff and look at what requirements we can have for the road improvements and what would be required of the developer.
Okay. And who does that go to? Or is that just an administrative review by staff?
With it being split between city and county, it would likely be a conjunction of us two putting our heads together and trying to figure out what the requirements are. But we would have jurisdiction with the driveway permit to say that you need to improve the road, since that's within the right-of-ways in the city and the frontages in the city.
Would that come to the Planning Commission again?
Not this Planning Commission.
Bryce, what the emergency vehicle service is, comes from where?
In the county currently?
How will emergency vehicles access this particular development? You've got partial city, partial county, you got fire, emergency vehicles. Where do they come in from?
It would come off of Minge, but it would be through the service of the county. The development itself is not within the city. Do you have a pretty good picture of what's in the city and what's in the county in that area?
You know, that's been a difficult area for development, going back a lot of years. I actually heard the same identical argument, almost word for word. When another development was being looked at for this particular area, and it squeaked through, it was called Strawberry Fields. Had it gone the other way, the people that are living here now in Strawberry Fields wouldn't even be here. It's been a very difficult process moving out in that section because of that 1911 tunnel that's out there, which I hate, because I've sat there too many times on it. And I can, I wanna blow it up. I have sat there wondering about if I could take a stick of dynamite and blow that thing up and what the railroad would do to me too many times. So I get it. I get it. But I also know the difficulties with expansions that we're seeing in the Johnson City, Washington County area, and the additional population moving in here. I feel for people empathetically, for them wanting to preserve a lifestyle and an environment where they live. But the rush of people coming in, it's always gonna be a dilemma, especially when you're in very attractive building areas, where in this particular case, exactly between Johnson City and Jonesboro, it's a wonderful access to that and Kingsport, if you can get through the damn tunnel. But it makes it, one of the challenges you have on something like this, is if the zoning doesn't come through with a developer who will come in with a low-density residential use, you also have a future risk where it could be a high-density use as more and more people come in around it. And whereas right now, you have something that's gonna be compatible with a Strawberry Fields style of development, if I understand it correctly, about 3,000 square foot houses. You know, that's a lot better than coming in here with multifamily or multi-story type of construction, where you have 15 or more units on a per-acre basis. So I'm just throwing that out for perspective. And I get it, but it's a very difficult dilemma for people when you're in a growth pattern like this.
Do you have a map of city versus county in that area? I mean, this is pretty much gonna cover. Everything else is gonna be in the county. This yellow box is the only thing that is in the city. On Minge? On Minge. Minge itself, and then about the first 200 feet. This is about 100 feet wide, 200 feet deep. And then on the other side, on the right-hand side, that's city before? Yeah, this is city. This is county, to the south of Minge County, and then city on the corner of Claude Simmons and Minge.
You've got a, you've got a shot that shows it. It's page four of...
There you go. Okay. So the yellow and red is city? Yes. And the rest is county?
Yellow and red.
Is that right? That's correct. Yep. The R3 yellow highlighted is city. If you imagine that the frontage runs right here, and then all of this B4, as well as this R3 city.
Bryce, you made a comment that spurred a question, as often happens. Sometimes the city road department sees changes that occur, and then they do a repeat assessment or a road study. Do you feel like once this is built, or once the final design is submitted to Washington County, let's say it was approved, and they know the density that's going to be in there, would that typically trigger a study for a city road?
I would turn that over to our public works staff themselves.
Okay.
If the development were approved, it would then have to have a traffic study before we give them a driveway permit. So at that time, we evaluate the road, we evaluate intersections.
Excellent. So just to be, just to be clear, if the traffic study indicates that that road needs to be widened, if that traffic study indicates a light would be required to handle the, accommodate the increased movements at Market Street and Minge, then that is something we would require before issuing a driveway permit?
And that is the developer's responsibility.
Yeah. Mr. McNamara, sorry, just one more question for you. Is it, I mean, I know we heard from the developer that in response to Mayor Hunter's question there, that the, this development would not work within the city subdivision regulations. Is that, is that true? Would the developer be able to replicate something similar to the, and I know we've got a concept plan, which is for information purposes only, but you know, something like 3,000-square-foot homes on lots reasonably within city subracks?
Well, if it stays as a planned unit development, there is no subdivision itself unless there is establishment of a public road in there. But that would have to be something that is submitted to us and us to review for proper consideration to, if it was like an RP-style development, something like that.
Forgive me, the one thing that I'm wrestling with, and I think Public Works answered the question for me, but it is, you know, with a county, a county development that may necessitate changes to city infrastructure. Yes, I'm just trying to get my head around that.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Gentlemen, what other questions do you have?
Well, that's not a question, it's just a comment. The only thing that's bothered me about this is that our Horizon 45 says large lots in this area. And, you know, what I thought we meant when we were crafting this particular description was acre plus or minus, more like, well, larger lots and reasonably, and larger-sized homes. So, it just...
Please.
Well...
Mr. McNamara, can you come, can you come forward and give us a little overview about the neighborhood residential place type? Can you, can you talk about that? And was this an area that you thought Horizon 2045 called for something akin to the neighborhood residential place type?
So, with the place type, there's different considerations, and that's why it's not so rigid with each requirement like zoning, is there's more consideration given to single-family, but other types are given different levels, so we can evaluate those in each specific site itself and how it would look in comparison to the surrounding area. Now, it does say larger lots, however, with this, we're not looking at single-family lots, we're looking at a planned unit development. However, with the proposal, it is single-family, and it is still skewing to the residential side with a moderate density. So, you can look at different characteristics as they apply within the place type at each location.
Mr. McNamara, the Horizon 45 plan has not been approved by the city commission. Why are we using it and giving it the same weight as policy or recommendations that we would from past land use maps that we use here? It just seems like we're giving it the same weight as we are giving weight to policies and recommendations that the city commission has voted on and approved, and this document is still being worked on currently.
I'll hand it over to Whitney.
Well, and I'll speak up too. I'm here.
So, one of...
I'm the bad guy in that regard.
Oh, no, you're not.
But I think we all that have been involved in this process for two years feel that in some reasonable form, Horizon 45 is going to get approved. I sure hope the commission is prepared to do that. And that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. So, I'm going to start, because I feel like there are two questions that are on the table that I kind of want to talk to. First one being, why are we using the Horizon 2045 plan? It is just because we have been talking about it, it is not an adopted policy. Therefore, you do not have to treat it the same way. But because we have been doing this work, we have been incorporating that into recommendations. The policy on record would be the bridge plan, which has that half and half of residential and commercial. So, those would be your, those would be the adopted policies. So, to make that just perfectly clear. The other part is how you use this, the place type. I would, I would, there's two ways to think about this. One is the compactness of the lot, which in this case, in compactness, is in the middle. So, you could use that as one of, one of your factors when you look at how we might think of place. The other is, it is not, this neighborhood residential is also in that area, and we'll get to it later this evening, where it's in between a more, the compact residential and the rural residential. So, it's hitting in that middle area. So, between kind of that smaller setbacks and, or sorry, smaller lots and not straight middle, but it's inching towards because we did want to provide a wider range of lot types. I'm just going to stand here in case you have questions.
I think that's clear. I think it is consistent with the...
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. We've already closed public comment, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Hopland, don't take this the wrong way. It's not meant to be mean or cold-hearted, but you know, in purchasing land, having an expectation or an assumption that people who own land around you will preserve it the way you want it is kind of a hard ask. At some point in time, maybe with this request, it will be developed in some form or fashion. However, you know, personally, I think, I mean, to Steve's point, many of you live on what were farms, strawberry fields, green, green, or garland farms. All these were once farms. But this particular request, it does bother me, you know, accessing city services, water and sewer while wanting to remain in the county, the road traffic, and it being such a narrow road. I don't think I'm going to be looking to be in favor of this.
No, I tend to agree. I tend to agree, Mr. Mayor, on this one. I'd feel much more comfortable if it were, if it was, if this development was coming through our process and not through the county's process.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the fact that the concept plan is not binding with this, with the county's approach. We have been very proactive in approving and strictly looking from land use as our charge. But in this case, there is a significant safety issue, in my opinion. That road is, I've been on that road and Claude Simmons and Minga hundreds of times, and it really is a single-lane road. And until that road is improved or there is a plan in place, I'm going to have a really hard time approving this one.
But as I understand it, the city will, in fact, do a study and make appropriate requirements of the developer before, before final approval.
At the time of the driveway permit, our public works staff would require the developer to do a traffic study and do the improvements.
And that is true. However, once we change the zoning, the property could be sold, it could be completely different than what is in this concept plan, non-binding concept plan.
But the study would still be required, whatever shows up on the, on the property. Is that not correct?
Depending on what intensity the proposed development is with the site plan at the time of the driveway permit, that's when the traffic study. But as Anthony Todd noted, with the proposed preliminary plan, it would be required for this development.
If somebody puts just two houses on it, no, there wouldn't be a study. But if somebody wants to do a similar development, similar density, then the city would ultimately require whatever is appropriate.
At what point is a binding site plan put in place in the county process?
So, it comes after final action on the rezoning. So, first, the parcel itself would be rezoned. It would be given the PRD-2 designation. Prior to any development on that site, the site plan would have to be approved by the Washington County Planning Commission.
But after the zoning has been assigned by Washington County, is that correct?
After final action on the rezoning to a planned residential district, yes.
Thank you.
As far as police, fire, who would service this property?
It would be all county, as I understand.
I guess another concern of mine is if, if we move forward with this and properties around it then annex into the city, it's almost reverse spot annexation, which would be something that the county should probably consider, and that they may have to donut hole service this with fire and police when it's surrounded by a city at some point in time in the future.
Yeah. And just to comment on a mayor's point earlier is, we do have zones that would accommodate the current plot that we have here for the 3,000-square-foot homes and the type. Now, they might have to do some changes with roads and things, but you know, to the annex question, it's not like that if they asked for annexation into the city because they're using city sewer, city water, city roads, that they couldn't build almost that exact neighborhood in the city limits. So, I just want to make that point clear because I think we've had good discussion up here, and I, and this is a difficult case, but I think there's been a good discussion on it.
Did you want to make that into a motion of some sort?
Absolutely. So, as far as new business 7.1, Washington County zoning 138 Minga Drive, I motion to, what I'll do is I will motion in the affirmative so that we can vote it down. Is that correct? Or would you all prefer to?
I think you can do it either way.
Okay, I'll do that then. I will, so as far as the Washington County zoning 138 Minga Drive, R1 low-density residential, A1 agricultural to PRD-2 planned residential, I motion to deny.
No, to recommend?
To recommend denial to the Washington County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to recommend denial to Washington County to rezone R1, A1 property at 138 Minga to PRD. A motion to recommend denial of that rezoning. Further discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Cooper?
No.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbain?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Okay, the motion passed. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move to 7.2, a text amendment and Washington County zoning resolution. If you could please exit quietly. Yes, please go ahead.
This is a text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution regarding public services.
To the Washington County?
Yes, this is a text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution.
So, should we have Ms. Charles speak on it from the county?
She'll come forward.
Okay.
So, looking at the process, all three regional planning commissions take a look at text amendments. So, there was a recommendation, a prior hearing, and then a second recommendation given by the Washington County Planning Commission on July 1st. We are also giving a recommendation, as will Jonesboro Planning Commission, all to the Washington County Commission. This is a proposal to add a definition of public services to Article 2 of the county's zoning resolution, as well as allowing this use in all districts within Section 513. There were initial changes that were caught on the first round. Those are included in the staff report. However, after the July 1, Washington County Planning Commission, a few other edits were suggested by the commission to better fit in with existing definitions and processes. So, definitions, Article 2, for public services, uses for essential services provided by a unit of government, including but not limited to any municipality, metropolitan government, and utility district were removed. County school district, nonprofit volunteer fire department, county legislative body for the direct benefit of the public, such as law enforcement, fire service, emergency, emergency medical service or ambulance, judicial court, or government offices. Within Section 513, uses permitted in all zoning districts. It's pretty simple, just adding this in 513.2. So, there is no existing definition for public services within the county zoning resolution. This clarifies the content of what a public service would be and allows it in all zoning districts. This is a very similar methodology to what we see in the Johnson City zoning code, where we have the existing verbiage of municipal, county, state, or federal buildings and land uses, and those being permitted uses by right in all zoning districts. Staff does recommend approval of the text amendment with the requested edits from the Washington County Planning Commission.
Questions for staff? Ms. Charles, do you have anything to add to this petition?
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything further to add. I think your staff did a great job of presenting this on behalf of the county because there are different jurisdictions located in Washington County. The state requires any amendments to our zoning code to go before those commissions. So, that's why you're looking at it, even though at the end of the day, it will not impact properties within the city limits. But be happy to answer any questions if you have anything additional. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak in favor or against the question? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. So, gentlemen, questions to us around this zoning resolution, text amendment regarding public service properties in the county?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend the approval of the text amendment as requested.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution regarding public service properties, and a second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbain?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, we'll move to 7.4, a rezoning request of 21.43 acres on East Oakland Avenue in Johnson City from R4 to B4. I'm sorry, from R4 and B4 to R5.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a rezoning request at 2875 East Oakland Avenue. This is the first reading for the process where the planning commission will make a recommendation. Tonight also is a public hearing. The first reading will be August 7th with city commission, with the final action date as September 4th for city commission as well, if it moves forward in the process. The property is at the corner of East Oakland and East Springbrook and adjoins the Johnson City Racquetball Center, just to put kind of it into perspective of where this property is located. It is 21, roughly 21 and a half acres. It is zoned to zoning designations of R4 medium-density residential, which is the majority of the site, with a B4 designation along East Springbrook. Both of the zoning districts are being rezoned tonight to an R5 high-density residential district. The request tonight is to not increase density with a higher zoning district. It is to allow for multi-story buildings that would require a 65-foot building height rather than a 35-foot maximum building height. So, that is why there is a rezoning request in front of you today. This does have a binding concept plan. There are seven apartment buildings, again ranging from three stories to four stories, six individual townhomes that are on... six individual townhomes that are along the East Springbrook frontage, 254 apartment units for a total of 260 units, a clubhouse, and standalone garages are also being provided, as well as a decent amount of amenities with a pool, racket, and tennis ball courts, dog park, and a landscape buffer that encompasses the entire property for adequate buffering. It meets the standards of the R5 zoning district in regards to density, buffering, and parking. Any major changes to this plan would require it to come back for planning commission approval. Current conditions of the site are various elevation changes and slopes. It is currently vacant and heavily vegetated. There are water and sewer services available. A traffic study has already been completed for the site and recommendations have been included and are reflected in the concept plan of one egress and two, one ingress and two egress lanes off of Oakland and one ingress and one egress lane on a Springbrook, as well as a deceleration lane to be included on East Springbrook. The current zoning is R4 and B4 as previously stated, and the land use is vacant. Adjacent zoning is a little bit of, we kind of see everything. We have adjacent B4 with commercial uses. We have residential, single-family homes. We have a mobile home park and industrial on the west side of the site. So we kind of are encompassed with a little bit of everything in the R5 district, along with the density is in comparison with the surrounding uses. The current bridge plan, future land use map, has this as commercial as well as the entire surrounding area. The Horizon 2045 land use map calls for this specific property to be regional mixed use, which allows for multifamily homes or multifamily units, higher density, and higher compactness. And it also highlights the use of formal open space, which is what we see with the parks and amenities that this is being provided. So it is in correlation with the future Horizon 2045 land use map. Taking it back to the bridge plan, it meets the policy elements to support quality multifamily developments in appropriate locations. For the Horizon 2045 plan, it meets strong neighborhood policies to support different housing choices and kind of infill development to encourage growth in already publicly served areas where water and sewer is already accessible from this location. The zoning, per the zoning code, we had a neighborhood meeting. Letters were sent out for the rezoning and the neighborhood meeting on June 16th. The neighborhood meeting was held July 2nd in the administrative conference room where we had one attendee, and her main concern was just the increase of traffic. She owns property on the corner of East Springbrook and Oakland, both residential and commercial, and was just concerned about the increase of traffic. And the property was also posted at the time letters were sent out on June 16th, 2025. Due to the request being consistent with the future land use map and the Horizon 2045 map, the request also eliminates a split zone property of R4 and B4, and it provides a different type of housing options and as well within the density allotment. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning.
Thank you very much, Ms. Putney. Questions for staff?
Just to point a quick clarification, so the understanding that the density is not shifting and maybe for benefit of folks present, that really what's driving the change is the 4.3 splits in the middle of the site and the need for the extra height to accommodate the maximum building height for those.
Correct. With the current zoning, the maximum building height is 35 feet. And with R4 zoning, the maximum density is 300. They're proposing 260 units and just want a 65-foot building height to have in their development plan of those four-story units.
Further questions? For anybody else in staff?
Just out of curiosity, is the water and sewer infrastructure adequate to support the amount of development that we're talking about there? Because there's been a lot there over the past few years. Has there been any need for any changes? Can we handle it?
I will turn that over to Travis Olinger with Water and Sewer. I definitely do not want to speak on their behalf, but he can answer that question for you.
Hey Travis, you have some big pipes in there?
Yes, we do have capacity at this location. That being said, we are feeling development pressures at Nob Creek wastewater treatment plant, and we're making plans to address that pinch point that we're experiencing and foresee to continue, but putting plans together to address that, but no issues with the capacity at this location.
Thank you, Travis. Any other further questions for staff? Is a developer here? If you have any comments you'd like to make, we certainly welcome them.
I'm Warren Sugg with Civil Design Concepts. We're a local civil engineering firm over in Asheville. Just available for any questions you guys have. I'd like to commend your staff that have been great to work with so far on just talking through the process, talking through what's coming next and what we've been through. So thank you for what they've done with us already. And just available for any questions. We also am joined by Tyson Wyatt, who is with Cavanaugh and Case as well. And like I said, I'm the civil engineer.
Thank you. Any questions for the developer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak in favor or against the question? Come forward, please, sir. Do we have your name and address?
Good evening. Brian Rowe, I live on Twin Falls Drive, which is adjacent to the part in question. I was, this is a massive, massive development. I'd rather see it smaller, but I'm not going to stand in the way of progress. I realize it's going to go forwards. It was good to hear that on Springbrook, there was going to be a turn lane. Really need to pay attention to the traffic on Oakland, too, because we have a phenomenal number of accidents right around there. And I haven't seen any plans to accommodate the traffic. But my main concern is really, there's a wetland area. I don't know whether I... There we go. There's a wetland area right here. And I'm very concerned about this because obviously it can't be built on, but I wonder what's going to happen, how we're going to be able to protect that wetland area. It's got an abundance of wildlife, you know? We've got kingfishers, we've got herons, we've got snapping turtles, we've got coyotes, even a few bear every now and then. And possibly, and there was even rumor that it was a bog turtle population there, which is an endangered species. I don't know whether that's been confirmed or not. But my concern is that this area needs to be protected, but I see that there's this green buffer that goes, that cuts right through the wetland area. And I know that you have rules on buffers, but how are you going to run a buffer through the middle of a wetland? I just don't see, I don't know what the plan is for that. So that's my major concern. I'm not going to speak against this, but I'd just like to be sure that there are some accommodations for the wetland and the traffic, as I mentioned earlier. Okay, thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Mr. Rowe?
Perhaps the engineer would like to come back up, and I'm sure you can satisfactorily answer the question as it pertains to wetlands protections and the stream buffer that I think you had indicated on the concept.
You're reading my mind. So yes, we've already had a streams and wetlands delineation done here, so we know the limits of where those streams and wetlands are. Right now, we're not proposing any impacts to it. If we did have impacts to any of the streams or wetlands, then we would have to go through those proper permitting. So that's the streams and wetlands. If we all choose to not plant, we're certainly open to not putting plants in the ground if that's really what we all want to do, but I think it's the code right now that we have to landscape along that edge. So that's our intention. I don't believe plantings within a wetland is an impact or a problem. And then along the traffic, yeah, we've had a traffic impact study done. Staff mentioned that, and we're adhering to the things that were mentioned in there.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Becky Rowe. My husband just spoke. We live at 308 Twin Falls Drive. The concerns he mentioned are important to us. We enjoy our two acres. What has not been addressed or what I am concerned about is we have not been told what kind of barriers from the setback would be put up. The property we own is heavily wooded, and we already, from the trailer park above us, we get kids running through there, you know, at 10 o'clock at night. We'll have a bunch of teenagers. We have homeless people. Now, if they put in 256 units where there's two or three units in there, so you get 150 kids. And you, according to the zoning, you can put up pine trees or whatever. How many of the 100 kids do you think a pine tree is going to keep out of our property? So if they're down there, coming across the stream, climbing a tree, climbing on the rocks, and they get hurt, it's not the development that's going to get sued, it's us. We can put signs up, but again, kids are not going to read signs. So we were kind of looking for some guidance or information on a more permanent type of barrier, be it a wooden fence line, a masonry fence line, something other. You know, and it's not just us, it's the other properties owned up, too, because that wooded area goes all the way up to where their entrance would be. And there are other properties up there. So if the kids are messing on us, they're going to be messing around those properties, too. So we were just kind of looking for some guidance or information on, you know, what can be done to protect all of that area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any thoughts on that comment? Thank you. All right, further comments from the public? I'll close the floor for public comment.
Riley, did you say a traffic study would be done with this?
It has already been.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't remember. And on Oakland, what kind of improvements, if any, are called for?
I think it will be easier to pull up the concept plan. So on Oakland, it called for a one ingress lane and two egress lanes on Oakland, which are being depicted on the concept plan. And on East Springbrook, it was a one-in, one-out turn lane.
I can't recall how close this is to, and I can't think of the name of the road that Snyder Science is on.
Creekmore?
Yeah, Creekmore. Where is that in relation to that entrance?
So the entrance is here, and Creekmore is right across from it. So the entrance to the development is located here, and Creekmore is right there.
The traffic study indicated a light, is that right?
No.
It did not?
It did not.
Are there any further questions?
What about the buffering, Riley, in the wetlands? Is that necessary considering it?
So it's a two-pronged kind of question with the wetlands and then the wood or masonry fence. When the site plan comes through and it calls for a landscape buffer, a type 1 buffer, if there is an already existing vegetative buffer that meets those requirements, our city landscaper can approve that as is. The developer does have the option of doing a wood or masonry fence and trees or just trees, depending on the size of buffer that they want to provide. So if they want to explore along the wetland and their property line of keeping the vegetative buffer, if the city landscaper deems that sufficient, then that could be a possibility.
I mean, overall, I think this is good infill development.
I agree. I mean, the existing, the density is not increasing. We're just going for an extra height, but that's on the higher part of a 4.3 split. So that's going to be on the downhill side there. The increase in height would not be perceptible to anyone else, I dominate. This is a site that's been zoning this, you know, essentially for this development for a long period of time. I don't think this is controversial.
Well-thought-out plan, and it's a perfect location for this type of density. I'm in full support of it.
Yeah, we've been asking for more infill development for a long time, and we've not seen it really as much as we would hope to. I do feel Dr. Rowe's thoughts on making sure that there's an appropriate buffer there on his property and, you know, reviewing kind of where his house is and where the development is. It seems like there's a pretty significant amount of land that's not being built on to separate, but I appreciate his comments very much and his wife.
And the developer will hopefully talk with the, when it's appropriate time, to talk about buffering in the wetland area, whether it's needed or not, I hope.
May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezoning request as presented.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the rezoning at 2875 East Oakland of 21.43 acres from R4, B4 to R5. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbain?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
All right, next item is 435 Mattson Road Final Plat.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a simple request for a minor subdivision final plat for three lots. The purpose of the plat in front of you is just because it's creating more than two lots, so it is required by statute to have planning commission approval. The property is located within Washington County, but within our planning region, so we are required to see the plat, and it has to meet our subdivision regulations. Kind of a zoomed out, put into perspective where it is located. The property is located here on Mattson Road, and in relation, Willow Springs Park and Andyok Road are kind of to the east of the property. Again, the plat is zone R1 in Washington County. It's creating three lots. There are no new public roads being built, and the three lots are meeting the requirements for Washington County R1 zoning requirements. Staff recommends approval of the final plat at 435 Mattson Road.
All right, any questions for staff? Discussion or motion?
Public hearing? Oh, no, there is no public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the final plat as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the final plat as presented in a second at 435 Mattson Road. Any further discussion? Please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbain?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now we move to other business.
A momentous presentation. I'm Whitney Hodges. I'm the planning manager with Johnson City, and I have been the shepherd of this process for the last two years. So it is with great pleasure that I present this to you because it has taken a lot of work to get here by everyone on this board, by the city commission, by the advisory committee, and our consultant team of Kimberly Horn, as well as countless of people who have commented on this plan throughout the process. Because this is the public hearing, I'm going to go over a few items that we've already discussed at your presentation last month, but just to kind of refresh a little bit. So we have been in this process since August of 2023, and we are at the bottom here in the final phase. We have been given all of the deliberations. We have been given all of the deliverables, they are on the Horizon 2045 website, so the public can go and look at those, and we are in this adoption process. So we have done, we've collected information, we have processed that to come through with kind of some guiding principles and frameworks, and we'll kind of go over those again just real quickly. But the community input has been throughout the entire process. So Kimble Horn touched on this last month, of how many views that we've had, and on our website, how many hours this has been within the community, because we have taken this to the public pop-up events, as well as your traditional public input sessions. We've had multiple online surveys and ways to participate. And this is blank, because I wanted, I was supposed to say something, and I forgot to type it. So, but what I wanted to say with this is that this last little bit of public comment has been the 30-day statutory period, and in that we've received 45 unique comments. One person actually took the time to comment four times, and those were in your, you have received those as comments. What I noticed from the comments were that overwhelmingly, people responded well to the plan as far as a guidance to growth, or they do not want growth at all, and so that was also in those comments. But for the most part, they've been really well thought out. The comments where we have found, like, people were providing additional information, we were able to put that into the final draft document and get that incorporated. So how we got here, and this is what I want to go over again just a little bit, is we had this community characteristics report that was done a couple of years ago, and that has been folded into this final plan, as well as the guiding statement and planning themes. I think this board spent a lot of time with those, both of those. And then we came to a conceptual growth strategy, which led us to these place types and future land use plans. Now, this conceptual growth strategy, this was the framework for which we started with the future land use map, and this is just a kind of, we have been over that one many times. But what it led us to are these place types, and there are six, 10, 11, 11, place types, where these are going to be kind of the guiding documents, and I'm going to, yes. And by that, I kind of want to give the difference between a place type and a zoning district. And with a place type, this is really a vision for the future, for future developments, and it's a recommendation of the land use and building forms. It has taken a lot of community participation, and it will be incorporated into our community plans going forward. And so its real main focus is on guiding rezonings and capital investments. Whereas zoning, that is going to be, it's a tool to implement this vision. So when people see a place type on their property, we did not change their zoning. All we did was change what possibly it could be rezoned to. The zoning is a legal development standard, so it's the requirements, it's what we have seen this evening. A lot of that involves staff administration, and then we bring that to the governing bodies. It is codified in a zoning ordinance, whereas this is more of a plan and a policy document, and it is a law, so it is, we would, we seek those development approvals. We use these place types in rezoning decisions, and I think that's really helpful for the public, as if they, if they're going to the map and thinking, is something changing on my property? No. What may, you have abilities to change your property, and you, as a body, have the ability to take that information in, because this is a community vision. And as we went through this process, it was very iterative, iterative, and it came from, with the future land use map, staff has looked at it, the community has looked at it, we had public meetings about it, we had online information about it. So this is a graphic reference, this is kind of the prettier document, because the lines are a little blurry. If you go to the website, you'll be able to type in, like, a specific address and know that place type. So then that's the Horizon 2045 JC.com website, but this gives you an idea of what we're looking for in the future. What I find interesting in this, and as far as kind of land development, let's see if these will pop up, is that a good majority of the city is in this kind of still residential. So you'll notice that that pistachio color is 35.9%, that's the amount of property in the study boundary, and the neighborhood residential, which did come up today, is about 40%. So we're still, we're still seeking a lot more residential, which came out in a lot of the public comment, of the needs for housing. The other thing is, we've also made some changes, because this graphic is wrong, and when it came to what the open space with employment flex and commercial corridor, that actually came out of a public comment. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people knew that we did take those comments to heart and did make those changes. So how we will use these is the two tools that we really, that I hope that you adopt tonight in this plan are the future land use map and the policies. The, as we go, I'll get to that a little bit. So let's, in the policy document, there are four types of actions, and there are plans, programs, policies, and projects. And so as you have gone through these, and we spent many weeks, many months on them, you will see those verbiages of what staff will be asked to do, or what different groups will be asked to do. This is part of the implementation strategy page, and that target date, or that target is usually something that's a high priority, so that's what we're going to look to as something that we need to do, we need to do. So this is an example, and Jonathan showed this last month, of what one of those pages looks like, towards the back of that. We lovingly call it the matrix, and because it is kind of a policy matrix, and we'll be using it as staff, as we make our budgets, as we think about our capital improvements, as we think about what we want to do. And I wanted to share, like, one of the things that's in that first portion, is that this, and I have said this many times to many people, this is a plan-to-plan. So this is not going to, this document does not have all the great things that we want to do in Johnson City, but it's meant to support all the great things we want to do in Johnson City. So if there, because there were several comments that I saw about maybe specific neighborhoods, or doing, you know, a certain, a certain issue that they wanted addressed. This document can't address all things, but what it can do is help start those conversations and help move those things forward. So annually, the city's going to look at this as far as what can we do, what can, how can we further this vision? Every five years, this is the recommendation from the document, is that we will evaluate the policies and assess, what have we achieved? What do we, do we need to redirect that vision? And that it is my hope that every 10 years, we start doing this, so that we can keep looking out 20 years, and that we won't get to the end of the 20 years and say, all right, now it's time to do it again. But that we're always looking to the future, because as we all know, markets change, that different things can happen, and we just need to keep that forward vision. In our division, and we'll need your help with this, what we're going to look at up first is the transparency in development process. You know, we want to evaluate all of our processes. We had a meeting tonight about the annexation. We will continue to look at that annexation process to make sure that is very well communicated to the public and all those that use it. This also includes some updates to the website, and we want to look at ways to help the public stay informed in some non-statutory ways. So what are we putting on our websites? What information can we give ahead of time, so that people are more informed as they come to you and make cases for public hearings? We're also going to try to assess some areas where we can start doing some small area planning, and those small area plans would be where we're dialing into a particular neighborhood or area of town, so that we can take those place types a little further, and really get into some refined, some refined planning. It's very exciting as a planner for that, which, you know, we're already currently working on, the city is the downtown parking study and a housing policy, and these all fold into what we've heard from the public and what we, as the city, see as needs going forward. So where we are in this process is, we have finished the review period as of the 6th. You had a presentation last month, this is the public hearing for public comment, and we will have a first reading, a second reading, and third reading. I do want to make, notice one change. Megan, who's the staff attorney, and I have really looked through of where that public hearing needed to be, and we could not find why it needed to be on first reading, so we wanted to just put it in our regular, kind of in our regular ordinance reading, and so that'll be in that second reading on August 21st. So if anybody else wants to come out, and there's another opportunity to make comment to the City Commission, that'll be on August 21st, if this is approved tonight. If not, then we'll redo the schedule. But this is not the last time that we are, like, this will be a living document, and we want it to be a living document. So in the coming month, in the coming weeks, what we're going to do is, we are going to likely make a few changes to some of the document, because communication needs to make sure that it meets all of our protocols. The future land use map, the policies will not change, we just want to make sure that we're communicating everything clearly and through the proper ways for the city. We also will want to create a website for this, that lives in our website, not Kimble Horn's website. So some of the suggestions that we've heard are, you know, we need a glossary. Well, this will be a great place to put a glossary on the website, maybe pulling out some of those maps, so that they're easier to get to than scrolling through that document that can live on the website, having some frequently asked questions about what is this plan, and then we also want to archive this process, and we want that to be on ours. So that's going to be something that we do. And then the future land use map will be added to GIS once it's adopted. Just want to make that clear. So now I'm at the point where, if you would like, there's a public hearing, and if you want to discuss this more, I'm happy to do that. It's very exciting.
Questions for staff?
Once this is adopted by the City Commission, who is the lead to, for want of a better word, bird dog, to make sure that each department, each organization, each whatever, is keeping this as, if not top of mind, at least a priority, day in and day out?
It really will, it really is going to depend on departments. If we go back to that policy matrix, in the policy matrix, there is a column for responsible party, and so that responsible party will take on that particular action. Now oversight will actually be the city administration, like, that is part, like, they're going to ask department leaders, how are you meeting what's in the Horizon Plan? We've already been told that. So I think there's going to be a couple of checks and balances in the processes to see, like, how are we meeting these, what are we doing? And then I think also it'll show up in our own budgets, you know, because this is a great policy document to say why, to justify why you are wanting to go a certain direction, because this is a community vision, and this is how we're living out that community vision.
So the very top of the food chain is the City Manager's Office, basically. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Just as, I guess, kind of clarification for the citizens, I've had some questions about, oh, I don't see anything about any road improvements, this is not a capital improvement plan.
It is not. But what you do see is in the coordinated transportation section, again, it's a lot of plans to plan, and so what this will do is help the public works and the transportation, which falls under transportation, to have some guidance and direction of what the community wanted to see and how to lead that, and it will need further planning.
And I think you had mentioned as well, there were comments regarding, you know, not, this isn't a document to necessarily encourage growth or to speed growth up, it's in order to have conscientious, thought-out growth, because we expect that, as Johnson City has done for the past 120, 30-some years, has grown, so it's to be thoughtful in that process.
And I think that how we have tried to, like, start, because as we had those policies and could provide you those policies and decisions you were making currently, I think that that has also helped with, show how this will be used as a growth guide. We saw that tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hodges. I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak to the question? Could you give us your name and address, please? You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Carmen Cook, and I live in Garland Acres over in South Johnson City. So I haven't had the opportunity to really get into the Horizon Plan a lot, but we've just recently been named Johnson City Top City to Live in by Travel and Leisure and Southern Living magazine, so we definitely need a growth plan, and we've already been experiencing a lot of growth. But my concern is, a lot of it has been unchecked, especially over in South Johnson City. We've, I've lived over there for 25 years, that part of town is ugly, we have a lot of homelessness, we have the highest rate of crime. So, and now on top of that, so the Johnson City residents have been moved to our, in 2025, at the end of this year, they'll be moved over there, and that's putting that very vulnerable population right there in the corridor for all of those homeless folks coming through there. So it's basically going to be a nicer building, which those folks deserve, but are things, you know, going to change. And like we've seen with the zoning requests tonight, same thing I'm facing out in South Johnson City, where Brightridge bought property out there at the beginning of 2024, just conveniently behind my neighborhood, and just conveniently after Brightridge has to move from down in Limestone. And that will be right in my back door, .2 miles. Now, Mayor Hunter there, he's heard our group speak a lot, so I represent the Johnson City Coalition Against Bitcoin Mining and Data Centers. So that's my big concern this evening and the future, so a lot of residential, yes, we've got to make sure that we've got to have the infrastructure to support all of that, but we've got to be very careful about the type of industry that comes in right on top of a residential neighborhood, right across the street, two heavily populated trailer parks with lots of small children, less than .2 miles away, is a school. And then practically right across the street, Tipton Haynes Historic Site. So that's my huge concern, and not, just not for my neighborhood, of course, it's going to be in my backyard, we know that that raises huge environmental concerns, and not just that the beauty of my neighborhood is going to go away, but my quality of life is going to go away. I'm not going to be able to sleep at night, it's going to affect my health, it's going to affect the environment in a five-mile radius, where you have the Johnson City Medical Center, you have the VA Medical Center. So it affects, when we think about it, from one, from East Johnson City to West Johnson City, 2.5 to 3 miles. So that's my huge concern that I want to bring to this planning commission tonight. Johnson City Commission has given us a one-year moratorium on the development of Bitcoin mining or any of those industries coming into our city, but that's still very concerning, because the tax changes that have already been approved by the commission are so weak, they make us so vulnerable. So I-
Rachel Hawley, 2411 Circle View Drive. I also live in the south side, Johnson City, with the same issue about the Bitcoin. If Johnson City has been voted the best city to live in, I really don't understand why we would want Bitcoin mining as a part of that. I mean, I see a great city with Bitcoin mining in it, it doesn't make sense, and the way our city is laid out doesn't make sense. You see a lot of the funding going towards downtown, downtown, where there's more crime, more, I mean, I'm not against people drinking if that's what they want to do, more beer joints. I don't understand that. And then you have the east side, where you have a dump, my mother lives there. My mother lives there constantly. There's this terrible smell that's nauseating coming through there. And then they're saying it's going to be open maybe 50 more years. Then you've got the south side, like the lady before me said, homeless people, you're moving John Sevier down there probably, because it didn't look good for downtown with the homeless hanging out. We've got buildings over there, they're dilapidated, there's just nothing, nothing there. So it looks like you're wanting everything downtown, and then east and south, let's put all the bad stuff there. Let's put all the bad stuff there. Let's hide it. We are residents of Johnson City. I've lived here my entire life, and I expect better of all of you. If we love our city, I mean, I know that there's people trying to come in, but do we really, do we have to accept every person that wants to come in here? I want us to be able to, to have our, our wildlife, like Buffalo Mountain, we see deer, we see bear. Do we, why would we want to run that?
Do you have, do you have comments about the growth plan?
The growth plan? I just want the growth plan to include all of the city.
Thank you. Further comments about the growth plan?
My name's Shelby Hawley. I live at 2411 Circle Drive in South Johnson City. And the growth plan is great ideal, but how it gets implemented and people getting ahead of the game and saying, who's going to start it? Who's going to control it? And it also controls what you do in this city, what you allow in this city, what you implement in business in this city, and what you implement in the residents in this city. And if the growth is going to have to affect roads, roads, it's going to affect land, it's going to affect the water, it's going to affect power, it's going to affect life for people, animals. And making it policed, fire, safety, everything involved has to be included in this plan, and has to be controlled in a very, very high important status. And that status means that you take every bit of consideration from each one of you. If you had lived in our area, or if we lived in your area, what we might see in the, and be in there, and be in those shoes, and consider what you would allow and what you wouldn't allow. We're, you can see, we're against Bitcoin mining, but we're also against anything that's going to be harmful, and it's going to destroy Johnson City. Because you go, you go to plan, it's talking about growth 20 years down the road. Well, that, that controls everything involved. And it can't allow a destructive business to be implemented. And you're going to have to get on the game of what the zoning and, and what the word and the verbiage is, about how strong it's going to be to keep these type of businesses that's harmful out of this city. City, because Johnson City is great if you want to stay there, but if you implement something and you don't get strong with it, it's going to destroy it. And 20 years down the road, you're going to say, well, we should have done this. Don't say what we should have done. Do what we should do.
Thank you, sir. Further comments? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. Gentlemen, the question's for us.
Well, I'll tell you, two years is a long time. You know, I think many of the commissioners have had hot and cold moments with this plan. I think we've talked to everybody about it. I will say I have a new respect for city growth plans, and the work that goes into these, and the detail that goes into these. And so there's been a lot of hard sweat and time that each of the commissioners that is sitting here today has put into this plan, many of which, you know, have been on since the very beginning of the plan and working closely with city staff, and of course, our contracting business used to help build it. And so, you know, I do have confidence in this plan, with the amount of time that has been put into it, with, you know, the pop-ups that were done. I feel like I saw Whitney at every single event I went to in Johnson City, with a tent and signs and stick-up posters and, you know, write your comment here. And so one of the biggest things that I felt was, I wanted to ensure that the city had input. That was one of the most important aspects to this for me, is that no one could come up afterwards, after two-year process, and say, well, we weren't heard. And I do have confidence that if someone was to say that, then they must have not been living in Johnson City the last two years, because they were out there online, had a website that started off a little bleak, and then really turned around, and had lots of great information, and then was also very interactive. And so I would just like to thank the process, because it is way more detailed than I think anybody could ever imagine for a city of this size to put forth a document like this.
Thank you. I've got some comments. Two years into this effort, discussion, debate, and collaboration, we've now got a growth plan for 20, for the next 20 years. It is just a vision that could be used to guide our efforts, to grow and develop for the next 20 years. The process has certainly not been easy, and not every path that we've explored has been without complications and disagreements. Sometimes we got contentious. I'm looking at you, Whitney. Like any long-range plan, it's not going to be perfect. But despite those challenges, the final product represents meaningful progress, a good and positive and necessary step forward for Johnson City's future. Horizon 2045 is a testament to the value of collaboration. Citizens of Johnson City offered their ideas, their concerns, and their hopes. We've heard some of those tonight. City department leaders and staff contributed a lot of expertise, experience, and insight. The administration and leadership gave this process both structure and support. The planning commission, those of us in front of you, alongside with the planning department staff, we have worked diligently for many long hours, trying to listen, refine, build consensus along the way. I'd especially like to recognize Whitney Hodges and the Kim Lee Horn Consulting Company for their guidance and technical expertise throughout this process. Their work helped us translate a wide range of input into clear and strategic, into a clear and strategic framework that reflects this community's priorities. It's not an endpoint. I want to make sure that you, we all understand that. It's a beginning. It gives us a shared foundation to build upon, a direction to follow, and flexibility to adapt to circumstances as they change. It reinforces our commitment to thoughtful planning, sustainable growth, and a community that serves all of its residents, present and future. Thanks to everyone who played a role in bringing this plan to life, your engagement and effort have helped shape a brighter future path for Johnson City. Any other comments?
That's not anything that was on the first paper.
And it was you that made me think of this. I really want to actually thank our, our media, because they have been really great at getting the word out about this and helping us reach more people. And I don't think that we often thank them, and I just wanted to say, in this process, it's been really very helpful.
The media is part of our community. Any other comments or questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I put a motion forward to approve the Horizon 2045 Plan and move it forward to the city commission.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second to move forward to, to approve, and I'll refer to the text on the screen, approve and certify the Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan, which includes the future land use maps and its policies. Is that your-
Correct.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the roll to be called.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Oshinbain?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
A celebratory yes. I'll say, the motion passed. Any more business to come before us? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.